Good evening, this is Kevin Erickson and welcome to the special meeting of the Ferrell School Board. At this time we're going to go into executive session and we will return in and out. (Audio cuts out)
Good evening and welcome everyone. I'm Kevin Erickson, President of the School Board. Just want to welcome all of you that are here in the audience as well as those that are viewing online. We're now out of our executive session and we're going to have our community forum to let you guys get to know our applicant. And I will turn things over to Northwest Leadership Associates to introduce John.
It's cool to do that right after the chat has stopped.
Well, welcome everybody. I'm Mark Mann and this is Wayne Robertson. We're Northwest Leadership Associates. We are here Saturday and I see a lot of familiar faces, which is great. We're here tonight. This is one of three nights that we'll be having community meetings. And we have our first candidate with us tonight. This is Dr. John Parker. John is from Bogota, Colombia. And he's going to start off with reasons on why he's here. Number one, why are you here from Bogota? Number two, why he wants to be your superintendent. And then we have some questions that have been submitted already that people will be asking and then John will answer those questions. So, Dr. Parker, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to be mobile. So, Jackson, is that going to be okay for the viewers online?
As long as you don't spray Barry Parker. I'm not going to put her behind it.
Yeah, so, first of all, thank you for joining us this evening, those of you who are staying at home and also thank you for joining us at home, those of you who are logged in online, wherever you are. My name is John Parker and I've just been really excited to be here. I just want to share a little bit. I just want to share a little bit about today, what today has brought with me. I have had a chance to be out in a few buildings this morning where I had a chance to tour and see the outside of the new Ferndale High School. Absolutely magnificent facility. And just to see that as a hallmark and a pinnacle of the work that the community for Ferndale has done is just really, really notable. And I just wanted to share my congratulations to the community on that. The other thing I've had a chance to do is to be at Cascadia. I've had a chance to hear from students firsthand and share with them why I wanted to be a superintendent. I've also had opportunities to meet with a lot of district individuals, whether it's been district leaders, teachers, union groups. The process has been very comprehensive and thorough and I have enjoyed tackling and fielding all of the different types of questions. One of the questions that I'm just going to get off the, right out of the bat is, why am I wearing this? Just so we're all clear, I just had recently had foot surgery and this is the first time I've ever had to wear something like that. But it also gives me a lot of awareness of what individuals who have some sort of physical ailment or physical disability, they get taught the first hand what they go through. I'd like to share a little bit about myself. And for those of you who have heard this, whether you turned in on Saturday or you've been part of the sessions today. Ferndale is an absolutely incredible community and I want to be here. And not only do I want to be here, I want to be here for a very long time. I grew up and was raised, graduated from Sumner, Washington, a very small community. And one of the things that a small community like Sumner really appreciated were all the interactions, knowing everybody. Everybody turning out for a basketball game or a football game as a common event on a Friday night. Attending the parades and various music programs or orchestra, those types of things and bringing the community together is absolutely one of the key things that I've heard from this community in a lot of the research I've done about how incredible Ferndale is. I've had a chance to... Anyway, and I just, I think that one of the unique things that I want to share about why I'm so excited about Ferndale is in doing all of that research and identifying what the needs were, what the successes were, what the celebrations have been, it really lines up really well with my core values. Some of those core values involve the following. I very much believe in building relationships. I also feel very strongly about the term wisdom and what I like to refer to as wisdom is listening and learning, also honoring the past. I also feel very strongly that only good teams, good organizations can also communities are built on trust. That's very important to me. The other thing that has become a core value and a line that I feel very strongly about too is fiscal responsibility and fiscal management. And I certainly am looking forward to answering any questions you might have on that later on. Also, the number one driver in basically my lens as far as everything that we do is the work we do around student learning and being rigorous for student learning and student achievement. It is actually the question why we're here and I always channel a lot of my questions that are fielded at me or the challenges that I've experienced in some leadership along those lines of answering, what is serving students? What is the best for students? The other thing that also is extremely important to me is teaming and collaboration. Not only with the people that I would be working with, but also we want to instill those types of things in our children here in Ferndale. And that would be an absolute priority to me. The last thing that's also on my wrist that I feel very important that I'm actually passing forward and sharing forth because it was so freely given to me was this whole notion of building others' capacity and modeling that and in doing that, working as a team and really raising everybody up so they're all better in the positions and roles they're in. So I share those things because I also am listening to a lot of parents, leaders, teachers in Ferndale. One thing has been really clear about the pride of CTE programs, the pride of the high school in Pasadena, the pride around the Lundy Nation. And also the ability to have incredible programs at the high schools specifically that kids can really identify with and engage. And this morning was a clear example of that when I had four students share and talk with me about some of the incredible things that are going there. The other things that have been shared as well have been issues that have been involving the district, involving the community, but they were also very, very quick to point out to me. And some of those issues of communication and fiscal responsibility were things that were brought up as well as other things as well. And when I listened to the list of items and I considered my core values, I thought Ferndale is going to be a great place to be a superintendent. And Ferndale is going to be a great opportunity for me with some of the experiences that I have had to bring it full center, front and center in supporting kids and our student learning gear and supporting our families, supporting our teachers and also supporting the people that are doing also some really heavy lifting, our building leaders. So enduring over that, I'm really excited about that. And just to give you a quick snapshot of the parts of my experience that I feel like I'm bringing to this opportunity is from where it all started, I really believe that you have to have, and people in Ferndale also shared this, you have to have experience. And so I bring 15 years of classroom experience in teaching middle school and high school science and mathematics. I also had a chance to become a high school principal because once I was done with the classroom, I really wanted to make a bigger difference and a broader difference in supporting all learning for all students throughout the entire school. And I had a chance to be a high school principal. I've also had a chance to visit two other countries. My wife and I, we decided to go travel to Shanghai, China, and I took a job initially teaching and ended up the principal there. And that was an incredible opportunity because we wanted to go and be part of a different community. And albeit even though it was in a city of 18 million people, it was a very small community in the school that we're at. And we had a chance to do all the research about that wonderful place. So the other part then after that, returning back to the States and I've had a chance to do, have experience as being an instructional coach of leading, teaching, and learning in classrooms for three years. I've had a chance to be a director of ELL. I've had a chance to be the administrator that is involved in releasing and partnering with our tribal nation down in Kewala, Kewala tribe. Something that has been immensely rewarding and those relationships I still have. Also, I've had a chance to be a director of instructional leadership overseeing K-12 mathematics and science. So I understand what's involved when you go through an adoption, what some of our fearless leaders in Ferndale are going through when they're doing some of that important work with regards to teaching and learning. I've been a director of teaching, excuse me, technology. I've been a director of innovation. And most notably, we might be asking, well, where's your experience with being an area superintendent or superintendent? I have the chance in working my way up in Kewala, a place that I've worked for over two decades. And I had the opportunity to move into a role of area superintendent or chief academic officer and just look quickly in Kewala, a district of 23,000. We sought to make it smaller by regionalizing it. And so the main superintendent broken up into three regions and identified three individuals, chief academic officers and area superintendents to oversee those three regions. What a wonderful opportunity to get that because in doing so, we did make this big district. It was eighth, ninth largest in the state, even smaller. I had that opportunity, wonderful opportunity in working with a profile of schools very similar to Ferndale. One high school, two junior highs, and five elementary schools. And so I know firsthand that with that same configuration, what that looks like in Ferndale. And I feel like that's a tremendous asset there. Most notably, I had a chance to work with teaching and learning and the building leaders as a chief academic officer in supporting all of our principals and APs in all the student learning work they were doing as well as helping with getting levity and bonds passed as well as working with principals on master schedules and enrollment, all sorts of things, teaching and learning, being in classrooms and being visible. And that has been the most rewarding. As Mark mentioned, what Mark also shared was he also shared something that was really powerful and that I'm currently in Bogota. I'm not Latino, I'm from Sumner and from, you know, I'm actually from this, from Washington State and have been all my life. We decided to do another trip and be part of that experience down in Bogota, Colombia, where we've been involved with a school just under 2,000. And that's been a wonderful over two learning experience. I say all these things because I'm ready and super interested and want to be here in Ferndale to be the next Ferndale superintendent. So with that, I would love to entertain some of the questions.
Good job, John.
Okay, so we got about maybe a dozen, 15 questions. Some of them overlap, so I'm going to kind of condense them a little bit. Excuse me, thank you. Thank you. I'm going to condense them a little bit and kind of make it work. Also make them a little more general because we want to use similar questions for the three nights in a row. Some of them are specific, candidate or another. So, first question, about what you are most passionate about in education? And maybe elaborate on what you're most passionate about outside of education.
Thank you. One of the parts that we were working on, that I was really pleased to work on in Bogota with the International School there, I had an opportunity to, if we were going to start from scratch and really engage kids where they're in the things that they're interested in, we had a chance to travel all around the world to see various innovation programs. And I was super impressed and proud of the work we did by taking all that information and coming up with a K-12 program that really was at the heart of kids' passions for learning and what they really appreciate. And this is all very similar to project-based learning. It's called design thinking, but it's basically where kids take something that they are very passionate about, they become, are the center of their own learning, they identify a solution they're going to tackle and then through a series of interviews, through work, and there's a model that follows. Kids are able to, from kindergarten to grade 12, in a sequence, really clearly go through and do these projects and be passionate about it, be completely invested. And that, when I walked into classrooms and saw that going on, was absolutely thrilling and passionate for me. And I had a chance then to bring all the things that I've known into those projects. And number one, student learning, as I shared before, there was no better way to engage kids than we have in the three years that I've been working down in Bogota through this project-based learning style with all the three grades, or all the three, four divisions that we had. So that's one thing that I'm really, really passionate about is ultimately, how do we engage students in real-world, relevant education that means a lot to them? And how do we really engage them in bringing them front and center in tackling issues that are relevant to them? Because that then builds the excitement further. And so that was just an absolute wonderful piece. As far as a passion that I do outside, yes. So I love being outdoors, I love to stay physically fit, I love music. My family is absolutely super important to me and supporting my kids, they're very involved with sports and all the other activities. And that right now as a dad, that's really front and center to me and a real passionate part of what I like to do. I also really enjoy reading and I really enjoy being out and about, being outdoors, camping, skiing, and spending time in one of our favorite lakes and stuff like that.
Thank you. Yes, to share your thoughts about the role of business and service organizations in terms of being a partner with the school district?
Certainly. One of the pieces that I felt strongly, strongly about was how do we bridge the gap from school to career? And what we found is we started tackling that both not just in home, not just in Kewala, but also in Shanghai and also in Bogota where we started to find our business leaders that we could turn them into mentors and pre-internships so that the kids that were really interested in certain careers could go pursue and see what that's like out through an internship to see if that's something that they really wanted to do. No better way to do that than partnering with the business community. Whether it's a person that's doing something like accounting or construction management or a lawyer or a doctor. Giving kids an opportunity to see that interaction, to see if that is still something their interest in has been absolutely important in a lot of the work that we have done. And so that is one way because once the business, once we have the business people being engaged and interested in that, we have them. And then we have better partnerships, we have the ability then, which then drew more business partnerships because they want to get into the game of mentoring kids and also sharing a lot more about their craft and what they went to school for. And that just really built the kids' capacity, but it also built our parents and our business leaders' capacity. That's one example, but I also believe that being visible out there with the community, often with the community, so you're hearing some of those challenges and things that are going on because those are opportunities that if we're going to maintain that partnership, it can be really solid in making sure we understand where everyone's at as far as the priorities for business and the priorities for our school district. So making sure you're partnering that up and marrying those two ideas.
Thank you. With Ferndale having such a large geographical boundary, especially the North Bellingham Contester, how will you try to unify the district? How will you ensure that all members of the community have a voice in the work of this school?
Thank you, Wayne. I think if I, I might be wrong on this and I don't like to quote numbers if I'm not correct. I think it's 110 square miles or something like that for the Ferndale School District. I say that because Kewala was 55 square miles. And one of the things that I feel very strongly, especially after all the research I did and conversations I had with individuals, parents, community members, people in business, and even students today and leaders. One of the things that I feel very strongly about is having listening sessions where we're giving a chance for our community to come in and then creating some established agreements and norms for those sessions where people can have a chance to voice some of the things that are on their mind, things that they're struggling with, things that would prevent us from, number one, improving student learning by having those partners at home. But also, number two, how are we going to bridge that gap and make sure that we bring our community in as voters to support what is needed in our schools, whether that's with capital projects? our schools, whether that's with capital projects levies, technology levies, bonds, whatever it may be. And so those listening sessions, and I've done them before, and I feel privileged to have an opportunity to facilitate a lot of those sessions and have some training, official, professional training on how to facilitate those meetings. And so that would be a priority for me, coming in and working with the board of directors closely, but also conducting listening sessions to bring those voices in from the 110 square miles if they want to, and also give a chance outside of a board meeting to be able to listen to what's going on, what those concerns are, or maybe things that we're missing that should be celebrated. So that would be one thing that would be absolutely a priority for me, or happen to us.
Thank you. How would you support co-curricular activities for students?
I think the number one thing is by attending them. Being visible out in the community at DECA, at debate, at a football game, basketball game, at choir concert, those are the things that illustrate, oh, the leader finds that interesting, or they value it enough to spend their time to be there, that's the priority for me, and that's not hard for me. When I was in Piwala, I had, I have five children, and my oldest daughter was in the concert choir and did that all through high school, love always attending the choirs. When other members of my family have been involved, I go to that. But also, I have always, as a chief academic officer, been to those, because the people that are doing those co-curricular activities love to see leaders at their events. And there's nothing that builds a sense of pride, and I think building co-curricular programs like that. In addition to that, there's going to be times where we need to have conversations, even if it's financial, that are supporting those co-curricular activities. We really need, especially coming out of the pandemic, we need those co-curricular activities to balance the need to get back on track with academics and the reading, writing, mathematics, and science, but we need that balance that the co-curricular activities provide, and also those are those outlets to also help our students that are struggling, reprimanding to the schools after the pandemic, those are extremely important as well.
Keep talking, go, get back to it.
Okay. Furthermore, I don't actually have any English.
Talk about your background in working with school district finances, bonds, levies.
As I shared at the beginning, courtesy of working in all those various director jobs, I had the luxury of overseeing a lot of budgets, and budgets that were quite hefty in their price tag, the money that we were using to help support schools. I've had a chance to work with multimillion-dollar budgets related to a district improvement plan as far as specifically improving mathematics and reading, and that required a lot of the school agency and oversight and planning. I've had a chance to work with budgets with TIDAL, ELL, I've worked with our schools, specifically our principals, because we're dealing with enrollment, and that is the number one thing that's driving a lot of our staffing, and that's been very important. I've also had a chance to, we had some opportunities where we had some failed bonds in Piwala, which is the closest thing, not Bogota, but in Piwala, we had some opportunities that I'd just love to share with you. We had a history of almost, I want to say almost six years where we were struggling to pass bond, might even be more than that. I want to say maybe five bonds where we had not passed bond, and we had some very emerging needs, we had overcrowded classrooms, we had buildings where roads were being held together with just, you know, bunches of tar and flashing, and we were desperate to leave. And so we kind of refought our strategy, and what we elected to do is, because we're having such a difficult time, we decided to run a capital projects levy instead, and we got razor-sharp clear with what we needed to fix in certain schools, that we couldn't go further without having support from the community to have classes in those schools. We also put together a very important bond advisory to build understanding and to gather the information to really be very clear what led to go on that capital projects levy. When that happened, we were able to, by virtue of the fact there was a levy, we had a chance to pass that and then worked really hard to deliver that product, just as promised, to the voters. I say that because then what we did is we quickly turned around, built on that success, and started, we hired some individuals to help us take a look at what the bond oversight would be, and what could we put on the bond that's not only going to be addressing the needs, but also beforehand, when we did the capital projects levy, some of the things that were on that would roll over, a few of them. And what we ended up doing then, after that, is we ran the bond on a promise that if we're able to pass this bond, we will stop collecting on the project, the capital projects levy, and we were focused, and that would be the only money that we would be collecting, whether it was tiling, whether it was the right opportunity, whether it was the countless hours that we put in educating various people in our community, which was extremely important, to bring the numbers, the dollars per assessed value to all of the stakeholders and happy forums, whatever the stars aligned, and we ended up passing the bond on such eight percent. And we're really, really proud of that because we needed to build a new elementary, and it was going to be one of the largest elementary schools in the state of Washington, housing over 1,067 kids. And that was in the region that I oversaw a lot. And so those types of things, all the work that went into the bond and levy for that, it was really successful for us, and so that's some of my experience. And with levies, what we do is oftentimes, we just are very, very clear, because we have usually, in Piwala, had much less of a difficult time passing a levy, but you have to do really good, solid work as far as communicating the plan, the cost to taxpayers and all of that. So this is some of the work I did in Piwala, and I really felt it was fantastic and would be very interested in partnering with the board to talk about various ideas, if a bond is in our near future, or a levy, and some strategies that might work. I also might add that that same strategy that we used in Piwala, Tacoma, the peninsula school district used the same strategy and found it to be successful as well. And so we're really proud of that, because at the end of the day, we got back to class sizes where they needed to be at, even in building that large school. And so anyway, I'll leave it at that, and I've also had a lot of work with renovating two junior highs in a region that I oversaw, using state-match dollars, something that's absolutely critical to equalize if you have that available.
Thank you. What sports would you like to see in regards to diversity, equity, and inclusion in this school district? What have you observed that you like in Ferndale, what would you like to do, what might you like to improve?
Okay. I think the one thing that I, I feel very strongly about equity, inclusion, diversity, and as I mentioned today, I shared on Saturday, I think it is very, very important to get really clear on what we mean by equity, really clear what we mean by inclusion. And what I mean by that too, is I feel like, first of all, I need to spend some time, because there's already been some tremendous work that has gone on in Ferndale, but as I shared before, I want to do some real, see work with the school board in finding out some of the history behind the equity work that's been done and the diversity work, because I want to take it forward, and I don't want to replicate, I don't want to step in holes as the leader of the district before finding out what has been the context and what has been the work going on that has been going on. That said, number one, I can believe very strongly in ensuring that all kids feel like they have a sense of belonging and that they're valued and that they're respected. Nothing is more and safe, nothing is more important to me than those things as far as in making sure that we are including everybody in this educational process here. So based on that, I would answer also the question this way, once we have some agreement about what, and we're clear on what we mean by equity, and what we mean by equity, or excuse me, inclusion and diversity, I would really be interested in sitting down with the school board and also with a group of people that feel very strongly about this within the school system, about possibly creating some operating principles or principles that are really operationalizing what equity we look like in this district. So those things, that would be probably amongst my priorities. I will share this too. Again, I shared this on Saturday, on the Saturday interview, and so please forgive redundancy, but one of the things that we found out that was happening in our classrooms, happening in our schools, or our teachers, and even our building leaders, were needing some additional help and support on how to handle matters that would fall under the umbrella of equity, inclusion, and diversity. And the important thing that I would feel very strongly about is making sure that they have the support to answer and to help support the kids going through things, the families going through things, the teachers going through things, that are all under that umbrella of equity and inclusion. And the other part is, is that we actually came kind of in an organic way, our principals that were in the region that I oversaw, it started out as really simple conversations, how are you all doing this, how are you tackling the issue of that? It came from everything from closing the achievement gap to helping special education students and to other narratives that were happening within the community or within the school. And by allowing a little bit of a forum or time for the principals to air those concerns, we created some synergy, well, how are we going to fix that, what does anybody have to say about that? And what we figured out is we didn't have all the answers, but collectively, we started to kind of get on a path where we could help our building leaders, teachers, and our students address some of those things that were happening in schools. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. From some of this earlier, hoping I went through your background, but a little more elaboration perhaps.
Okay.
What is your experience and maybe some strategies or approaches in serving as an instructional leader involving traditionally marginalized groups in education?
Certainly. One of the areas that, when I was working as director of instructional leadership, we were going through a number of curriculum adoptions in mathematics and in science. And one of the things that I felt was really important to address were our marginalized students and making sure that the new curriculums that we were bringing in were going to help not only our students that might have special needs, but also have the supports for our English language learners, and would also help our making sure that our different demographics within our school district could see themselves in the curriculum, whether it's images, stories, and that was really important to us. But it was really important when we talked to parents and students, for them to be able, for students to see themselves in that curriculum, for parents to see a Latino, a Latinx, Latina student involved in pictures of that, students visible with disabilities. And so one of the things that we wanted to focus on is making sure that we used and leveraged some of our policy language to gather and survey and bring parent groups together before we did the adoption, to ask them that question. And we found that that was a very powerful tool for us to use, to ask, actually ask those groups or people represented from those groups, how does this work for you? And that's always been a strategy I've used, is ask that question, is that working for you, do you see yourself here? And so that's been one of the ways that we've done that. The second thing that had been very important in the work I've done, both in science and mathematics, as an instructional leader, has been the PLCs that we've made. We actually carved time out in Piwala for those groups to meet, and we really use, there's a fantastic book called Learning by Doing by Before, that really lays out, we're going to come together as a team, how do we work well together, how do we look at the data properly, and how do we identify how various groups and various tiers of groups out how people are doing, and are we meeting their needs, and are we getting the results that we wanted? And through those PLCs, where we carve time out and met regularly, those were some very simple and yet important ways, learning to close some of those gaps. And so it's been some of the best work we've done, because I was able to bring some of my work with, from TIDAL and ELL and some of the other work that I've done together into a coherent way of addressing.
Thank you. Excuse me, about ten minutes and four questions.
Okay.
Share your ideas on advancing trauma-informed practices in this school district.
Please forgive my reference to Piwala, but it's really important that I anchor things in specifics, so you know what's important in actual things that I've done, rather than just talking about something that I had planned to do. We, in our monthly opportunities with our principals, our directors, and building leaders, we had an opportunity to talk with Jim Sforletter. If you're not familiar with Jim Sforletter and his work, he was one of the first individuals in Lincoln School in the middle of the state that talked about trauma-informed practices, Aces, adverse childhood experiences. And it was so powerful for us that we started to take a look, and when we had the session with him, we got to ask him questions, we immediately started to look at what kind of things do we need to do, both within a school building, which involved our principals and teachers, but also the district office, so that we could support that kind of trauma that we knew the kids were experiencing from Aces. And I'm happy to say it has led to some of the most groundbreaking support systems that we had in Piwala, at least up until the time I left a few years back, in that we, as one example, we found as a partner with Joint Based Movement Corps, we contacted them, and they were really interested in putting a medical facility in one of our schools, and immediately I raised my hand, I said, let it be in our region, we'll pilot it. And we did that, we put a medical facility, albeit it was mostly to help our students because we had a larger military population, we had an opportunity to support them in some of the things that they were challenged with, but that was one example among a few, that we tried to really operationalize how we were supporting those trauma-informed practices in the school, as well as having professional development in our buildings and teaching teachers more about that. And what a lot of teachers really appreciated that, because they learned firsthand, that it doesn't have anything to do with the behavior of the student, more of the trauma that's behind the behavior. And that really helped our And that really helped our teachers, we still had to work a lot on the actual behaviors, but that was really important as a ground base for some of the work we did.
What's your view, share your view on the role of librarians in this group?
I have this question today. The question, I'm going to, I'm going to share what the question was today because I think that librarians are, and the work that the librarians do are absolutely pivotal to what is necessary for students to understand how to research. And that's the angle on this, on this part. In, at Sine and G, the school I'm at, the International in Bogota, over the last three years, we have wanted to expand the role and repurpose the role of our librarians to encompass more than just the traditional sense of being a librarian. We wanted to empower those individuals more by bringing them current into 21st century practices, as well as making them, because they were FTE or they involved, they were a staff member, we wanted to include the work that they did more succinctly into oncology-based learning that I described earlier. And so what we did is we started using them more in a concept that they call maker spaces, where students go in and they're basically allowed during, when they're conducting this project, to do a series of maker projects, and we have the librarians helping out, facilitating those conversations with kids, helping them research, so expanding the role that they do. I do believe that there needs to be a little bit of an upgrade to what the librarian might do, because just bringing it up to 21st century standards, but though the details and the rules that you do are extremely important as well, so it's a little bit of that.
Thank you. Mentioned Qala and Bogota both times, but two or three gems or spotlight experiences going through Ferndale from your previous experiences?
Sure. I think the, for me as an educator, a learner, and a leader, the opportunity to go research, like I've already shared with you, project, we called it Project 2025, on the project-based learning, that is a gem to me. Because I was able to bring all of this work as a prior principal, a teacher, and a director, instructional leadership, all into a focus on one thing that's really focused on improving kids' engagement in the classroom with certain projects that they feel are important. That's one gem. The other part is, I'm also feel like it's a real gem as far as the understanding different cultures, understanding what you have in your community as far as different groups and how they can be honored, and how different groups can really add to the diversity and the overall experience of a community, whether it's the Latinx community, whether it's the Luminati, anything, having that makes us better. Having broader perspective about the global world and what's going on beyond Waukesha County, Washington State, and in the world only serves us better. And it's not just my opinion, people who have been overseas or been international or traveled a lot, they understand this as well. And so that's a real gem for me. And the last gem I would say is there's nothing better, nothing better than the thought of being in a small town community and going to a football game on Friday night. That's a gem, because that's something that I've always been involved with as part of being in smaller communities, and I'm just really looking forward to that. So collectively through those experiences, that would I say, I would say the gem.
Thank you. Last question.
Okay.
Say you'd like to read, what is the last book you've read?
Right, and right now I just finished, and I'm sharing this with board members. It's called The River of Doubt by, it was written by, forgetting the author's name. But anyway, it's a story, because I'm living right now in South America, it's a story of Teddy Roosevelt's journey down into the South American Amazon Rainforest, and what he is going to do, and he thinks it's going to be fairly straightforward and easy, because Teddy Roosevelt was an explorer and adventurer, he thought it would be really easy, and he's going to navigate, one of the first individuals down what was called the River of Doubt. And the experiences that he ran into in Yerba Dye, a really good book, I recommend it, and a lot of the books I read, I love to look at those lessons, especially in leadership, and that's one of the reasons why I have an affinity to books on historical leaders.
Thank you, John. John?
Thank you.
Take a couple of minutes for a closing statement, and then we'll probably give you a round of applause.
That would be wonderful, thank you. So I just want to, I want to say this, I just feel absolutely privileged to be here today and to go through all of the interviews I've had, the questions I had to field, the people I had to meet, not had to, the people I've met and enjoyed, absolutely have enjoyed this process. You know, someone will share it with me, oh my gosh, I hear from 7:30 to 8:30. I have it missed a beat and I've enjoyed every one of them. And as Ferndale superintendent, you can expect the same titleless energy, and you can expect the devotion to student learning, and also being a dedicated member of this community moving forward, something that I look forward to, and having more conversations with all of you and all of our individuals and candidates and leaders in our schools. Thank you very much for having me.
So, not tomorrow night, but Wednesday and Thursday night, same time, two more candidates as the board moves forward to their deliberations on the selection of your new superintendent. Thanks for being here. Your input, your participation, good questions, thank you very much.
And please complete the surveys that you have there. Let me get this on, but just please do your surveys and turn them in, and the board will read them tonight. So thank you again, and I think you got an announcement to make, too.
So I just want to thank everyone that's here, both in person and online. Please do fill out those surveys. Our experience through Saturday, we got a lot of good comments, and we appreciate those as we deliberate on making this decision. Again, as Mark and Ray said, we will have similar forums on Wednesday and Thursday nights with other candidates, and then we'll be deliberating and making a final decision Thursday night and announcing it Friday morning. So thank you again. At this time, the board is going to go into another executive session where we'll be talking with Dr. Parker some more, and that would be for us to chance to fill out those surveys for us to look at. So thank you everyone for being here.
Good evening. Just wanted to give those of you that are continuing to watch an update. We are still in executive session. We anticipate being about another 30 minutes and then we'll either come out and make another announcement of extending that time or journey. So thank you for continuing to be with us.
Good evening. Just wanted to give those of you that are continuing to watch an update. We are still in executive session. We anticipate being about another 30 minutes and then we'll either come out and make another announcement of extending that time or adjourning. So thank you for continuing to be with us.